I'd like to call the Thursday, August 15th Board of Education meeting to order at 7:02. Roll call.
Chairman Toppa Holcuk here.
Vice Chair Maffler here.
Secretary Siena?
Here.
Janice Hall-Domos. Carolyn King-Balor. Lynn Sidney.
Here.
Cynthia.
Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors?
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 18th, 2019 Board of Education meeting as submitted.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, if I may make a motion to amend the agenda to include under personnel goals for the superintendent?
All second.
Is that going to be under D?
Yes.
A second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a second motion. A motion to amend the agenda. Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda under D, goals for the superintendent.
Sorry.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, so go through all of this first. Resignations? None. Appointments?
You're going to my report right now?
I don't know.
No, under personnel.
Under personnel says discussion, nothing?
I do have a list of department leaders that I'll pass out during my portion. Thank you.
Leaves, none. Okay, now let's go to you.
Thank you. Okay.
You have to do your goal, sorry.
We'll get this right.
Yeah, it's fine. I can barely see it this far.
We're still on summer vacation. Okay, so they all read?
So we, last month, we voted to extend the contract and we agreed that this month we would talk about some goals. So many of the board members emailed their goals in case they would be absent, but I suggest that the ones that are here go through and present their goals so that you could write them down and we can move forward with them for next year. But why don't you go first? I have yours, but here, so there's no reason for me to read it. Do you want it?
Do you want me to go in the meantime?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so mine is, there's such a movement to push students to attend college, but we also need to help the non-college-bound students prepare to enter the workforce. Manufacturing is in dire need of skilled employees. So my goal, and I can email this to you if you want, so you don't have to write it, is to increase STEM offerings through the technology department by establishing a manufacturing component to our existing curriculum. And in order to measure that, it would be the establishment measure will be determined by the designation of an appropriate area to provide essential skills welding in an approved area. So I'll forward that to you. That's my goal.
Okay.
I got it looking for. Here we go. It said.
So what I was looking at is, I would like to, I put something in there about test score improvements to raise or improve student test scores above the state. And I know we barely are above the state. And I know when I was a teacher and we did goals as a teacher, we had to do a percentage that our students would improve by 25% or something, I'm pretty sure it was 25%. So I would like that to be a goal where we were to increase the test scores of our students above the state by at least 25%.
One year?
One year, yep. I just, I don't like them being right at, I mean, like a point or two above the state. And I think we should...
So, current perform, you're looking at S-Back testing. You're looking at grades three through eight. You've got SAT, you've got AP. So I'm going to need more specificity for what you're looking for.
Well, I put that out there for us to talk about. I thought we were going to be in the other room and talk about it. So it was just something that I would like to see more emphasis on raising or improving the test scores. And we want something quantifiable and so...
Well, realistic and quantifiable. So why don't I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think 25%...
So what would be helpful? I think what would be helpful is we take the standardized tests that the children use at each grade level, you bring them back to us, and we look at premier schools like the Madison School District, and then we look at schools in our Durg and see what is the average gain?
Right, so when Tracy presents...
And we'll see what's in kind of in the middle.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping that we could discuss because I didn't have that kind of...
Yeah, because 25% in one year is not...
So can Tracy get that data to us for next meeting?
Well, ambitious is one thing, realistic, I think. And I'm not saying we're, we'll get the data, we'll share it.
We'll get the data and then we'll choose a percentage.
I didn't have the data and I brought this up for discussion. I want and I need, I feel like we need a percent so that what we can attain actually...
You get a quantifiable percentage.
But something that's quantifiable because not just, oh, they'll do better. We want to quantify it so that when we do your evaluation that, oh, you met this goal, okay, yes, as opposed to just, yeah, okay, you did a good job.
Right.
So that was my thinking behind that.
Okay.
I also was hopeful that maybe we could add another language to the intermediate school and maybe the first year might look like how you brought in Spanish, I think it was 50 kids, students that you had for the first year, and then we increased it, so...
We would have to look at staffing and, you know, what that implication would be if we were to, you already have Spanish now for the entire eighth grade class and it's off-cycle for seventh grade. It's part of the rotation. So if you were to go to a second language, it obviously would be French. And if we were to move French...
Well, it's not going to be French, but...
Well, we don't, you currently offer under-certified teachers in the entire district. We have Italian, we have French, we have Spanish. We no longer have Latin. Okay, so you would have to stick to, if you went out and tried to hire a Chinese Mandarin, you'd have to hire a full, one full-time person to do that. That's costly.
But if we're sharing teachers between the high school and the intermediate, the possibility, you've...
You'd have to still make agreements.
So that the possibility of maybe getting it for a trial with a certain number of kids, I don't know, I thought maybe it's 40.
Because now you'd be the only one who currently have a high school. Potentially this year we don't have Czech or Latin.
No, right.
So the time is possible. I don't want to speak three folks, but that would be something with our Italian numbers, you're still pretty strong.
Right. French is, French is under on the decline. So you'd have to look at your certification and your staffing levels if you have to do, bring on and add staffing to do that. Is that more important than your STEM goal of increasing your STEM offerings?
But, I mean, we were able to do it for Spanish and I was just hopeful that maybe we could do that and the possibility of, you know, getting it in.
We can look at that.
I'm actually going to read Janice's goal because her has had to do with language as well. It said, "I was very happy to see our language program grow. I would like to see its continued growth. Well, we made great improvements. I believe it could be more. We have Spanish part of the year in seven, full year in eight. I would like to see it at least begin in sixth grade, perhaps part-time, then up to full, to a full year in sixth and seventh, measurable by seeing plan in place to expand program and then the date of implementation."
So I'm going to turn it over to...
I heard, I heard, but I'm like, let me just read it.
So Spanish would be partial year sixth grade, partial year seventh grade.
Already?
Yes.
Starting this year.
Starting this year.
Look at goal map.
So it would be easier if you look at, if you want to expand your language to have it go to a full year in seventh grade?
Yes.
Because...
And then eventually full year in sixth grade.
Right. It's easier to triple that down with certification. The most certified staff that we have are in the Spanish department. I think one of our Italian teachers is dual-certified, Spanish and Italian.
Our recently retired part-time teachers who are certified.
Right, both. So it's easier to do that than it is to bring on a new language where you have to go out and then bring in a full-time teacher. So we can look at that.
But if you could look at, like you're saying, Italian, the possibility of sharing the Italian teacher. And I'm not saying it has to be everybody, but like the way you brought it the first time, you sort of like one class.
Right.
Who's to say in the eighth graders are going to want to take it? But they might, and give them that option.
Right.
I'm so happy one goal is met.
I knew that ahead of time.
Makes our day.
I called Janice and said...
Okay, so the revision to that is now it needs to be full for sixth grade.
For seventh grade.
Well, we had to start.
Full for seventh.
Full at seventh, okay.
Okay, I wrote Janice down.
Okay. Cindy, do you need your goals?
You gave them to me.
Okay.
So mine was just better and more complete communication. There's emails we get that kind of give the initial issue or concern or something going on, and there's not then the email tying that up into a pre-bow with the completion or the results of it.
Closing the loop.
Closing the loop, yes.
Close the loop.
Please. Or don't put me in the loop because then I don't want to know it.
Another goal. Eliminate, eliminate the loop.
Eliminate emails.
If I need to know, tell me and then close the loop. If I don't need to know, don't put me in it.
If the kid goes to the hospital that passes out, you want to know that the kid is okay.
Yep.
Kid okay?
Right.
Return to school.
Right.
Right.
But there's been some where it's, it's been opened and there's never been resolution to it. So it's like, I'm assuming...
Well, there would be resolution, you just wouldn't know about it.
Yeah, yeah.
So you want, we want to just end the email with, "All good." When we get the word back?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And then, and this is kind of more for the entire board per se maybe, but resolving the completion of the high school renovation and streamlining central office by reducing cost by 20%?
So you know we're, you know that we are in the process of interviewing next Thursday for the high school project. We have four interviews coming in with 45 minutes apiece.
Actually, I didn't know that.
Oh, so there's a committee that they know. So those on the committee will sit next Thursday. We're going to interview four. Then we'll select, the council will then appoint, and that process will start to do that part of it. We also, the committee had two bids come in for the consolidation. So that, those two bids just came out, so then we'll go through the same process of interviewing and then that will start as well. So those two, both of those things are moving forward.
Okay, perfect.
Perfect.
And attempt to be more open and transparent to the general public, include the monthly financial statements in the board packet. I know we get a budget, but if there's no budget meeting as well this month, we don't have anything.
So I can email that to you tomorrow.
Okay, and then also include it in the board packet with our minutes. Prior to making expenditures that are outside the budget appropriations or not within the budget limits, notify the board prior to making such expenditures. In the event of emergency transfers, notify the board at its next regular meeting for appropriate approvals.
Could you give me, explain that to me?
Grant an open choice?
So could you give me an explanation of what you're looking for?
So like for open choice, for an example, you bought those...
Oh, this is about the nets, the wind screens?
Well, it's about anything. I mean, that's an example. I'm giving you an example. So anything that's purchased outside of, outside of, like in grants that you get, we would like to...
So anytime I purchase anything, you want me to notify you?
So prior to making spend, well, that are outside the budget appropriations or within the budget limits.
The choice money is within our purview. It's part of our...
But our open choice money, is that in our academic fund or is it in a separate fund that you have?
Is it part of the budget that the Board of Education oversees?
No, because we don't, no. We don't know how many kids come in. It's based on...
That's not the question.
Is it part of the, it's simple, yes or no? Is it part of the budget the Board of Education oversees?
No.
So, so on camera, open choice, the Board of Education does not have jurisdiction over open choice. It's superintendent discretion. So it's not town council money. It's not town money. It's not tax money. The Board of Ed has no jurisdiction to tell the superintendent how it's spent. And it's not in our...
And where is that documented? Because if someone questions it and wants to know, is it a policy? Is it a regulation? Is it a this or is it that? Is that written somewhere that says that money is for the superintendent to do what he sees fit with? Because in my opinion, it's money coming into the budget, into the school systems that we then oversee.
So if you're saying it's two different things, if you're saying, when you spend choice money, I want to know what you're spending it, that's...
I think there's two separate, I think there's two separate issues. Because our role as a board is to oversee the budget. But if there's pieces, we oversee the budget that the town sends out.
The money.
The money.
The money that's allocated to us.
Now, it's kind of like...
You hire us to manage and designate and fund and make decisions.
But it's kind of like that grant with Tracy's grant for the preschool. Like that's not in our budget either really. That's her, her goal. But we know how she spends it, but we don't have jurisdiction.
We know how she spends it before she spends it.
So I think we have two separate issues. One is that we don't oversee the grants that, that you get. That's one thing. So we, we shouldn't have a policy on that or make a policy.
All right, there's a policy. I'm looking at P. 7450, which is school that he sponsors. What? It's hard to read. Superintendent's goal shall direct the maintenance of district and school-based fund accounts through which the funds received by the district shall be accounted. The superintendent or his designated shall, all right, I have to, it's very small, so I have to go back. Maintain separate accounts for the district's school lunch program, adult ed, summer school program, grant program, and individual school student activity accounts, and make expenditures from such funds in the manner prescribed and authorized by the superintendent. Provided the control of those school funds and the funds of all school organizations shall remain in the name of the respective schools and organizations. Then it goes on to the accounts of the school. Activity funds shall be considered town accounts and audited in the same manner as all other town accounts. So it doesn't say anything about choice procedures.
Okay, so that, we should, we should include that and amend policies just so we're clear. And since that's kind of your discretion, just out of courtesy if you just...
I just see it a little differently. If we were over, if we were overspending accounts and if what you're saying is you want to know before we purchase and do something, that's, that's easy to do. But if what you're saying is you want to select what we spend money on, that's a problem. Because that, the responsibility, what you just read, is that it's the superintendent's responsibility to manage the $31 million budget, stay within the confines of that language, and you entrust in my administrators that...
I think she just wanted to know.
Yeah, but it's two different cases. You know, if I go to buy, if I go to buy a net for a baseball field and, and we use that, I'm going to, I'm going to call all of you or email all of you or have a special meeting to buy a net.
I know you let us know when someone falls.
Right.
I mean, it's the same thing.
You charge me to make those decisions.
It's just a simple thing. It's no big, I mean, for me, it's not really a big deal. I'm just saying, it's kind of like anything else, like we see the nets up. I like the nets.
Yeah, we had break feed back on the nets.
Right. You mentioned a baby grand piano. Like that's huge, right? We did a bunch of that.
For me, it's not the nets or what you're spending it on. If it's, if it's benefiting the school, I understand that. It is, who is overseeing, you're managing that money. No one knows how much money is coming into it, how much money is going in, out of it, and how much money there actually is in that account.
It gets on the bill, right?
And if you want that formula, that's a simple question.
But it's auditing and the, and the business manager oversees that as well. It's not, it's not just him. It's the business manager, the accounting department, and...
So I think a nice goal would be in reference to like grant accounts and like school choice would be...
You just want to know what's done here.
We just want to know what, how much it is and what it is.
Or would a quarterly report work for you guys instead of needing an email if he wants to buy? Well, and I think too, part of this, I could maybe go into this that I didn't put in, is like if you're going to go to a park and rec meeting to let us know, I'm going to go to a park and rec meeting to ask permission to put out tennis nets that are town property. That would have been waiting to know.
That's micromanaging.
It's not micromanaging. It's also to back him up if it's a good idea.
Carolyn, I don't think I'm going to get any backup, quite honestly.
I like that.
And I didn't say you, but I'm saying, I'm out of the community all the time. I don't need permission to go out and endorse and promote our programs and our students. That's absurd.
So if he asks to go over Sunday's house because of an incident, if you want him to...
No, I'm saying if you're going to another, if you're going to another town...
If he's going to another community meeting to benefit the Northbury for school system, he doesn't have to report to us and let us know that he's doing that or get your permission.
That's, that's my job.
It's not my permission. It's just informing us that he's going to go to say...
It's beyond micromanaging.
I think it's nice. I think it's courtesy to show a nice working relationship.
But this isn't a matter of, this isn't a matter of courtesy. What you're saying is, is that if you have a problem with those tennis nets or screens going on...
No, what I'm saying is, I didn't even know that there was a meeting that you attended and for me to have been told about it, and this is just an example, it would have just been...
It's not an example. It falls within my goal as the superintendent to go out and on many different venues of many different events to promote.
Right, but you can say, I'm going to attend this meeting to talk about this, and if we choose to go, we go. It's an open relationship, Scott.
Transparency.
If you just agree with that.
It's not transparency. It's total micromanaging. And if you remember when the cave gentleman...
I can certainly put out when I'm, I'm going to speak with all the PTAs and the PTOs, if you want to come. I really want to get everybody to come.
I'm saying it's more like the committee, like the...
B.R. meetings versus going to other meetings that I'm attending.
Well, there's park and rec. What else is there? There's like land trust. Like if you're going to go to any, like if you're going to land trust or you're going to...
The Rotary, you're going to come and go to the Rotary. If I go to...
But if you're talking about, people have trouble making these meetings. People are having trouble making these meetings and you want to be notified to go to other meetings? I'm sorry.
I could put out, where's Waldo?
Event calendar? An event calendar?
What?
An event calendar?
That's the biggest thing I've heard.
Just give them a GPS tracking device and follow them.
What's that?
That's what you do.
So back to the school choice.
I like to think that you're all going to come and support. I really would like to think that, but we'll, we'll put it out there in a little city.
That's right. We have meetings at the town council. Were you there the past couple of times? He was there. Were you there? You knew about him, but you didn't show up. We were there.
Great, but we knew about him. Thank you.
But you, but you didn't show up to see what he was doing.
I don't think you should put fingers at a teenager.
No, because you're pointing fingers at this gentleman.
I'm not pointing fingers at anyone. I'm just asking for goals to be discussed.
But we knew about it. To be honest. That's all I'm saying. An event calendar would be lovely. And we have a choice to go on. When you don't know about them, there's no choice.
And at open choice, you just let us know.
The only reason is because people didn't like some of the nets and they got in your ear about it. That's the point.
Well, I think what, I think what we're going to do for...
Be honest.
Because I've never used this thing. I don't know what else. Gosh!
Actually, my son said it was a really good idea because he played tennis. So I backed him, Marcy. It's just how it went about getting it out. And that's what my issue is, and that has been issues that I've had. It's not necessarily the product of what's being done, but how it's being done. And if you can't understand that, I'm sorry because it's just, that's my issue. The product is fine.
So what we're going to move towards, Scott's agreed to do, an event counter and a four of us of the open choice projects.
What I'm doing with it.
Yeah, because you might have some projects and you don't want to know what is, is going to really come to fruition until it kind of...
Right.
Yeah, okay.
But just for the record, they're all student-centered.
Right.
They're all for the betterment of our programs and our students. And none of that money would be spent on anything frivolous or anything other than our students.
Right, I just remembered the piano. That's all I remember, so...
That's on the record.
Scott, what, I'm digressing here. What year did we start with the project choice?
School choice?
What year is during Shepard Neale, that court case? So Shepard Neale's, we're going back to the eighties.
In the eighties. Okay, because this policy was revised, the 7450 was revised 2013. So maybe we need to go back to it and put in for project choice. And if there are any other...
New grants?
Or any other, other accounts that maybe we should put into here, to put it into the policy so that one can cover? Does that make sense?
Yeah. When we get a new business manager, we can...
Right, we can't do it until we get a new business manager, but maybe it's something that we put on the...
But in the meantime, I'll share it, do what I'm spending.
Perfect. Okay, Vince, do you want to...
Just to bring it up today.
Do you want to put your goals in?
I can't hear you.
Do you want to put your goals in for the superintendent, sir?
Sure, hopefully it'll be a type of cereal as the last one. I think what I'd like to see, when I look at the graduating classes from the area towns, one of the things I look for is what colleges the graduates are going to and how many, if any, are getting accepted to the premier colleges. So I'd like to see Northbury for at least, starting this year, and Todd, I think it comes under your jurisdiction, to pick out several students you think were qualified to be Ivy League material or MIT or Stanford material, to get them to apply. Because some of them may not want to apply because they don't think they're going to get in. If we can start working with these children and start wanting to top five, and I think as we grow over the next couple of years, if we can get one or two or three out of the clip, that will certainly bode well for the town of Northbury for our educational. When you promoted the Totucket Times, whatever, we had three students go to Ivy League or whatever, or MIT or Stanford, the premier colleges. I'm not just saying, whatever you guys choose. I might just run it as one of the goals, that we work with those students to get them into these colleges.
Will we also be assisting them with financial assistance?
There's, there's so many variables.
Helping them find scholarships and, because I know there's a lot out there.
Yeah.[1632.88]
Like, that might be, that might be deterring them too, if we can kind of couple that with helping them find-
I just-
No, we can get them to apply, stop the child, there's local, that's what I mean.
We send out, or we used to send out all of the student data for the colleges. So you see where they're going and where they're looking to go. And, and you said that tongue-in-cheek, but there, there's a huge shift right now in where students are going to school, obviously because of fiscal-
Yeah, I'd say tie with students.
Challenges, and these schools are seventy to seventy-five thousand per year, times four, then you start the master's program. So, you know, I just think we need to be careful with, and, and we can do that. We can continue to educate with where we're, where we're encouraging our kids to go. You know, when I look at our number one and number two, this, we'll use this year, both females were All-American student athletes. One is going to Boston College, and the number two is going to a very small competitive school, and I can't think of it right now. The fact that you have a number one and number two, both who are All-Americans, there's only twenty-two All-Americans selected in each sport for, for these young ladies, including private schools and all public schools in the state of Connecticut. So if you start breaking that down to one hundred and sixty-nine districts, some districts that have multiple high schools, add all of the private institutions here in the state of Connecticut, and you have two students, number one and number two, who are All-Americans, that's what we should be standing up and celebrating. That's what we should be saying, wow, that this is unbelievable. But we're, we're not spending enough time doing that. I hear what you're saying. It just have to, we have to be cautious with the reasons why kids are going where they're going and, and the selections, and many times, as we said, they can't afford.
But I know many times these schools, if they know they have these students who have been accepted, they will work with them in financial aid packages.
Oh yeah, and our grant.
Absolutely. And other things. Especially private colleges. They'll work with them to make sure that they attend their school. So I know that, you know, your top school's gonna be seventy or seventy-five thousand a year, but there's also a way that these institutions say, okay, when they look at the FASA, they say, okay, we can work with the student, they either have, you know, club money or they have something to support or help, you know, offset the cost of the school. But I think with both of them, North Burnford, just start reaching out and being more competitive and trying to get them to these top schools, and not settling for something else. That's all.
You can easily do this with the kids who are accepted. As I mentioned, the economics, there was, I think two, three years ago, where I think half of our top twenty kids-
Went to UConn.
Went to UConn, where they had gotten to accept some other private institutions, and the institutions offered money, but there was such a gap between UConn and Northeast or BC or BU that even with the money that was offered, not looking at it as a parent, parent-
Yeah.
Right, when someone's in the hopper who's applied to Yale but also put up the act, I feel the pain. So you should also hit UConn. So we need to get to that data, that's, that's impressive, very valid.
And I like to be allowing that at some point in time, cause I don't totally rock with my-
So if you do want to see that data, the data that we used to include, let me know and I will get you the data that we, that we did do before. Where they applied, where they're accepted, where they were denied, and where they ended up going.
I'm a proponent of that, I like that information.
Well, I don't think it needs to be specific per student. You just want to know where they're applying to and where they're being accepted to, so that's just a here.
Well, you want to know where they're going, you want to know where they're going.
I understand that, but it doesn't have to be affiliated or associated with any student number, any student.
No, we don't have to, we don't have to do that. We're saying-
Five got into Brown.
I'm not in the third class, I'm just looking to see, okay.
Yeah, where they're accepted.
Where the students got into Brown, whatever.
Those students that are gonna be college bound, not everybody's college bound. But those that are being college bound, that we're necessarily gonna be helping them to get there, like Marcy said, there's the manufacturing industry, those students that don't want to be college bound, we should be helping to get there. I like to see the statistics, to see those that the colleges they applied to accepted and where they chose, not the names, I mean it's-
Yeah, right, we have all that.
Okay.
And we gladly have you come in and sit down.
Yeah, okay, I can do that.
That's an open door.
So I'm the last one with my goals, but I bet you know what it's about. Food service. I am homophobic. But I just, I would like to see the food service program overhauled. I understand it's moving in the right direction as far as finances, which is great news. So if we could work on over, you know, kind of overhauling the offerings and making them more appetizing, that would be fantastic. Marcy and I are going to go about school lunches. Everyone wants to join us at every school. So we can assist and kind of help guide, and if we can get into some other schools to see what they're offering, we'll try to do that too. But I would really like to see that, so I could stop talking about it.
I expected that one.
Yep. So I see, okay, so, there we go.
All right. So now we're gonna move-
Now what you look for.
Okay, so we're, I think we've, I think we're good to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. So under F, opening day professional development, those of you who can make it, on the twenty-sixth, we'll be kicking off at our breakfast at eight o'clock in the cafeteria. We'll recognize teachers. Chairperson, Puppin Holt, so you'll be speaking.
I will.
If you're available that day.
The twenty-sixth?
And if you're not, your vice chair would stand in for you at eight o'clock.
In the morning, in the morning.
It's a Monday.
In the cap. We always have the breakfast in there. Cause we're doing the breakfast. I think we're gonna stay in there this year. We're gonna stay in and keep it, stay in the cap.
I think I'm gonna need Martha, Marcy, to speak at eight o'clock in the morning. I have a standing Monday morning meeting.
All right. So we'll also have our new teacher orientation during those two days, and we go through a whole host of things for new teachers and new professionals in the district. So Bruce Williams, Suzanne Wright, and Tracy Rooton will, will meet with them and go through a packet of information. Professional development update, we're gonna, we'll move that. Well, actually, I'm gonna just share the leaders. If you could pass that on, Vince, thank you. This is the list of those who have applied and who have been appointed. Starting with the, I'll wait till everyone has it. With the department leaders, the school and the position. Second page, the high school advisorships are listed. These are all stipended contractual positions. The athletic appointments for the fall sports are on the next page. There's a number of, there's a number of Saybrook graduates on here. If you look on the right-hand side underneath where it says Mark Basil, the next one, two, three, four, five, five in a row are North Burnford graduates. Skipon Dwight Boltman graduate, Morgan Enofio graduate, Yvonne Boltman graduate, Tori Ramada graduate. Mom is? Mom, okay, Mom Galvancy graduate. So we have a number of, of our graduates who are involved with our coaching. And then the last page is the middle school, we have the list of their coaches as well. Some of them are, have not been filled yet, so we're actively recruiting to fill those positions. Any questions here? If not, I'm gonna pass around just a quick update of the, Mr. Mace, could you pass that around as well? With the summer projects. Some of them are, if it says Town Hall, that means that Town Hall is actively in the bidding process or put out to bid, and they are going to appoint, they're going to appoint the, the award winner. Okay, so I'm not gonna read all through those, cause you had Bill Chody speak to you last month. So this is just the checklist of what's been completed. The ongoing one is the, obviously, the elevator at the high school, and we're thinking that's gonna be more like October, November, before that's complete, because of parts and, and that process. The, the over, overhead connector, the-
The walkway?
The walkway. Will be started next week. On the nineteenth or the twentieth, the town zoning appeal committee is gonna move that forward on the nineteenth. That was their next meeting date. We already have the temporary permits, so we put the footings in and we put the lags in, so we can connect the steel, let it go pretty quick. And then the walkway will go in there. The fencing is complete there, the shed is all in place as well. So that project is, will be done in the next week to ten days. So those are the biggest ones, a lot of air conditioning work and things like that that have been completed. Summer touch-up work and the buildings are still being cleaned, so we have another full week next week, you know, prior to the start, so next week will be a busy week.
I have a quick question. Once we get situated and you hire the business manager and all that, and we go back to our budget meetings before the board meetings, will Chody be joining us for those?
He can, when we have, you know, when there's a healthy number of things going on, we can bring him in.
That was, I thought that was really helpful to have him there, so.
Absolutely.
I mean, I hate to put more on his plate, you know, passing it.
It becomes once a quarter.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So we can get an update.
Yeah, when it builds up, we can bring him in.
Yeah.
Not to overburden him, but-
Yeah, it doesn't have to be every single month, but-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That would be great.
Question, on the auditorium, when we had our last meeting, was that going to Town Council to get the bid approved? Like, cause I know it's waiting for bid, so I thought that was like the- Received bid specifications for brickwork.
Yeah, so that's, that's back at the town. Because they're looking at the middle school project and the high school project with what they're gonna do with that. So they're looking at if they did it, the recommendation was that they did it in pieces over time, so then now they're gonna cost that out, what it would be, cause I think it was like three hundred and something thousand dollars.
Okay, so now it's not just the auditorium, there's more. Okay, can that come about from the last meeting?
If you look at NBIS, you'll see a lot of dark staining right now. So the brickwork has to be re-boarded, because it's weeping and the water is, it's growing mold on the outside. So they're looking at if we're gonna do the auditorium and re-point the brick, would it make sense to, to do something with the middle school as well?
So that came about in the last Town Council meeting or something?
Yes, yes, and that's Tramroll and Bill Chody working with the council.
Okay, thank you.
Can we just put that on our list for the joint meetings to kind of remember? I know I'm on that committee, but I don't forget. If we could just keep following up on that, so we could, while it's on our list, we're like constantly updating.
For maintenance stuff?
Yeah, so we kind of, cause you know, otherwise, I see what it's saying, but in four months, I'm gonna say,
Well, but it changed from what it said last time.
But like, in four months, we're gonna be like, hey, what happened to that? Because we might just move on to something else, especially with the high school project. So if we can just kind of keep getting updates on it, yep, like a rolling list.
Can do. All right, any, any questions on that list? If not, the feasibility study update, we have members, we had a joint meeting with the council. And we then, then had a second meeting, and there were four firms that submitted proposals. We're gonna interview them on August twenty-second at Town Hall. Forty, I mentioned forty-five minutes, we have a series of questions, and then we'll make a recommendation, the council will then appoint the bid winner.
Will this be inside the building?
Or we can do it out, it depends.
Done that before?
Depends on who's there. So that's moving along. We're, we're finalizing camp, we had a great camp this year, the Shark Tank kids. The kids had a lot of fun, and that was another successful year with enrollment, so we were happy with, with camp and-
What was the enrollment?
Enrollment?
For the camp.
Maybe, is that? Yeah.
For camp?
Yeah, I guess that was successful, I was just wondering what.
For the total camp, per week by, I don't know.
Just total.
Meaning? Just total.
Total camp. Cause some kids go for a week, some kids go for the whole summer, so-
So were they mostly filled all the classes?
Unduplicated.
And then, and then they capped some of the classes, so then they-
So like, how about estimate?
Or bring it to us next month.
Bring it to us next month.
Yeah, can you look for an unduplicated number of participants? Unduplicated number of participants.
Right, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would just be good to know.
Yeah, right, that's what, that's what you're looking for, for next month.
Right, for next month.
Right.
Cause I just know, in a lot of towns, the, the camps are going down, so I'm just interested in what-
Oh. So if you're asking, is it hell, yeah, I mean, so sometimes we, we cap our numbers for certain things like cooking camp and-
Right, that's why I just would like to know about the-
Yeah.
Just what, like how many kids aren't going, overall. I mean, it doesn't matter if they go one week or two, just in overall, participants.
We could, yeah, we'll get that. And that is it for my report.
So committee reports is gonna be fast because there were none. Was there anything under pension, cause it says discussionable?
Pension, they, they were gonna have a meeting, and then they ended up having to cancel because there's not, there wasn't enough people to do it. Who is my stand-in for that? Because they meet-
I don't think there is a stand-in really.
They meet at twelve o'clock, and I just can't get out of work this month for that, cause we were short-staffed to begin with. So I need somebody to fill in for if I can't, that was part of their issue.
Isn't August at a restaurant, it's like a lunchtime thing in, in August?
Yeah, I mean, they do a few, we had a few, they only meet like four times a year.
It's every quarter, but it's noon, and, and that's really difficult for me, I mean-
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering, I thought, Vin, did you say you were gonna go on that one? I thought somebody said they were gonna go on it.
He tried.
He was like, no.
Oh, he went on policy.
Depending on the day, I might be able to be your backup, but I can't do Wednesdays, cause I have the office every Wednesday.
My kids are graduating tomorrow.
Is there, is it a particular day each week, each quarter?
They meet like four times a year or something. And then if there's like more, like we had at one point, you were meeting more often, and when I was home, it was fine.
It's an important committee because we, they need a board member to vote. You get to vote on, you know, you get to vote on that. Don would, Don used to fill in when people couldn't go, but it was just for informational purposes, he couldn't vote.
He couldn't vote.
So we do need somebody to vote.
Is there a way you can call in for it, or do you have to be physically present?
I have to ask them, is you can change, I'm like, can you change it? Cause I really can't leave at like twelve, one o'clock.
Do we have this schedule for this coming year?
Yeah, it's always like in the-
Anthony Esposito got the schedule.
Okay, we should get that and say-
Cause if it's not a Wednesday, I might be able to be your backup, but-
I probably could do something too.
I can't even lie, I cannot be a backup, I mean.
Yeah, noon's really tough.
Yeah, it was, let me see if I can-
But if we have a schedule, make it-
So yeah, maybe for the next meeting, if we have the schedule, we can wrap that up.
Cause they kept asking me to bring it up, I'm like, I really can't make this, is there any way we can make it at night? And I was like, no, I'm like, okay.